I'd like to call the special city council meeting on May 29th to order. And we'll move to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussie?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Well, I just wanted to take a few moments and outline the process as well as, you know, the, obviously, we're here tonight to fill us a vacant seat on the Maricopa City Council. We've had several applicants, and in the end, we actually have five. One is not here tonight, I've seen the other four. We have applicants of Wade Beckstead, who is not here, Carl Dietrich, Dan Frank, Brad Hinton, and Rosalind Sanhaja. And so what we're going to do tonight is, I'm going to first invite each of the candidates up to introduce themselves, just very quickly, their name, you know, something very quickly, sit back down, and then we'll move on with the process. The process will be thus: the city council member, city council is all aware of the way that we're going to go forward, it's going to be very similar to the last time we went through this. What we will do is, we will start by drawing names out of a hat, or, excuse me, numbers out of a hat, at which point, after the numbers, that will indicate the order, one being first all the way through four. We are going to sequester the other three applicants in a conference room just off over here. We are going to ask that they turn in their phones to the city clerk, so there's no communication there. During this timeframe, the city council will ask one question. Each, each member of the city council has devised a question that they would like to ask the applicant. They'll have three minutes to respond, up to three minutes to respond to each question, after which, we will move to the next person, and that, that person will be sequestered until we've gone through all four candidates who are here. At which point, we will bring them back in. The city council will, if they have any additional final questions, we'll ask those, we'll move into a vote. The vote will consist of your top two, so councilmembers, you have the ability to vote twice, not twice for the same person, but up to two times, and you can, that, that information will then be conveyed to the city clerk, at which point, it'll be put up on the screen behind me, so everybody can see how everybody voted. So we have that, that transparency. At that time, after the voting, the top three, out of that first round, the top three will advance. Obviously, there's only four here tonight, but the top three will advance. Then we'll go into a potential second round of questions, nobody will be sequestered, everyone will be here. If council asks additional questions of any, any given candidate for any reason, they'll be asked to step up, three minutes to answer, and we'll move forward. When council's ready to vote, we'll vote, and you'll choose your only one vote at that time, pass those votes on to the city clerk, and the top two will advance. After the top two, again, if council has any additional questions, you can ask them at that time of the top two, and then we'll vote again, until we have at least four individuals who have voted for one person, thus making a quorum out of a total of seven individual votes, as you can see. And so when the number of four is reached, for any given person, we'll have a, a new city council candidate for about five or six months, and they will be sworn in tonight. So we thank you for being here, and just before we get started, I, I will say that, you know, I can't speak for every councilmember, and I can't speak for every council, but certainly, choosing a city council candidate is not fun, at least councils don't typically enjoy it. Contrary to public belief, it's not something that's enjoyable, at least not in my book, and it's something that I think that the voters should do, but sometimes law requires that, that we should do it. So we've been voted and elected to do so, and so we'll move forward with the process. Council, do you have any questions on the process?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and start going down the list that I have here. Mr. Carl Dietrich, would you please come up, just introduce yourself, give us three sentences about yourself, something you'd like us to know.
Three sentences.
Whatever, just arbitrary.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Carl Dietrich. I ask that you consider me for the position, as I'd like to continue my service with the city of Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carl. Mr. Dan Frank?
Mr. Mayor, council, my name's Dan Frank, and I thank you for this opportunity to come to you this evening, and present my qualifications for this empty seat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brad Hinton?
Mayor Price, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. I am eager, if I get the chance, to do this, and welcome whatever questions you have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. And Ms. Rosalind Sanhaja?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. First, thank you, and it's nice seeing everyone again. I think I've had the privilege and the honor to run against almost everyone. I didn't run for mayor, but, give me a minute. But thank you again for taking your time. This is not a normal meeting, so just like everyone will expect, council positions take more than just your everyday, or your twice-a-month meeting, so thank you for taking the time out to, to fill the seat and to hear us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that completes all the candidates. So at this time, we'd like to move into having them each draw a number. If I can have them come up here, if, if all of you would come up and pick a number out of this bowl, that would be wonderful. Okay, can you let me know who has what? Rosalind? You have four. Brad? You have number one. Carl? Three. Perfect. And Dan? Number four. Number two. Okay, and Dan, you have number two. Great, thank you very much. Well, with that, let's go ahead and get started.
Mayor?
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to motion to e-session for legal advice.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to move to e-session for legal advice. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So what we'll do is move to e-session quickly, and then we'll come back out and start the process. Thank you.
Open meeting, be honest and open, be a team player, and be, being ethical is what I, I believe I do in my everyday life, so it's something that will, will not be hard to do, being on, on city council. I, I have, I have respect for all of you, and gratitude for, for the community, so for, for everything that, that's been done for, for me and my family as being here, and I'll, I'll be honest and do it with integrity, and, and, you know, do my research, and, and abide by the, the code of ethics for, for the city and the state.
Vice Mayor?
Hi, Brad. What experience and history, as a public, as a public servant, have you served in Maricopa or anywhere else?
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, all, I would say ninety-nine percent, I'll leave one percent out for something else, but ninety-nine percent of my experience comes here, direct with the city of Maricopa, as, you know, as you, as you all know. I had the opportunity to start up the Development Services Counter as a consultant, and then shortly after, be hired by the city, so, you know, I worked for the city for about nine years, given the opportunity to, you know, to build the city, help, you know, enforce or, you know, the guidelines and policies that you've all have set forth, so I feel like I have a, a lot of knowledge, and that's what kind of makes me qualified for this short term, is that I can hit the ground running. You know, I have, I have experience with your capital improvement program, and a lot of development experience to where, budget experience, to where I can, I can be an asset to you guys. You know, I, I know, you know, I'm not going to make a difference as a whole for the entire community, but to take an opportunity for myself, as well as hopefully you all, to, to maybe shed some light on some subjects and give some insight from the experience I have being on the staff side. And then, the other, the other piece to that, I, I grew up, my, my father has been a town manager for twenty-plus years, so, you know, I, I understand, you know, the, the government and how it works from the local government side, and I think that that, that says a lot as well.
Thank you. My question for you, Brad, is, you know, the city code claims the role of a council member is a part-time job, but most highly effective councilmembers will tell you that it's much more of a full-time job. Can you please acquaint us with your current schedule, how you'll make the necessary sacrifices to be present day or night, at all the required meetings, committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, special meetings, engagements with your constituents, et cetera, in order to effectively move this city forward, with, especially with the amount of work that's left to be done here?
Mayor Price, councilmembers, I currently work a, a full-time job with Meritage Homes Development Services as a land development manager. I have the ability to come in early, I, I set my own hours, as long as I get my job done, so to beat the rush hour, for instance, I'm, I'm coming in, I leave my, I leave my house at 5:30, and I have the ability to get home to beat the late hour, rush hour, so my employer is well aware of, of me pursuing this, and excited for me, and understands what it takes, and, you know, I'm not going to lie, my family comes first, I'll spend time with my family, but I know what it takes, and, and the dedication that's required, and, and the research that is needed, so I will, I'll, I'll definitely have my evening and weekend hours to, to dedicate myself to, you know, the readings and the research that's needed to, to help make the right decisions.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brown?
Brad, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, good. Why do you feel serving a six-month term of office is more compelling than serving a four-year term?
Good question. Well, as I said, you know, my family comes first, I'm, I'm young in my professional career, and obviously, providing for my family is, comes first for me. I, I felt like this was a great opportunity, I'm not going to lie, for both myself, as well as, you know, I hope, hopefully you see it as well, for, for all of you, to be a, a team player for, with you guys, I know I've said that a couple times, but I, I think that that's critical, to, to understand and, and know how I feel about that, and that just, just being able to, you know, shed some light on some subjects and, and, and be an asset. So I, on the flip side to that, I, I don't think that, you know, I, I would be willing to go through the effort that it takes to, to go on campaign, and, and to financially set aside money to do so, and, and that long-term. I don't, I'm, I'm young in my professional career, maybe when I'm a little bit older, I could see, you know, if, if, if I like, you know, this opportunity, if I'm given it, then I could possibly see myself going after the, the full terms later in my career, but, you know, being, being as, you know, young as I am, I guess I'll say, it just, it doesn't appeal to me right now, to be honest.
Thank you.
Councilman Gussie?
Hi, Brad.
Hello.
You and I worked in development services for a couple of years together, and I know you came to the city of Maricopa without a college degree. So my question is, I value higher education. What is your highest level of education completed, and how will your degree or education make you an asset on the city council?
Councilwoman Gussie, Vice Ma, or Mayor Price, I have a Bachelor of Science in Construction Management with Arizona State University, and then I, you know, as, as land development and construction management, I, I feel like that, being a young, growing city, development services was at the forefront of most of the activity and the decision-making that's been going on, or that has gone on, in this short term of an incorporated city. So I, I feel like the direct experience that I did get with development services, and that I do have with both the city of Maricopa Development Services, as well as what I'm doing now in, in land development, I currently manage the engineering process for Meritage Homes, that I, I think that that would be a huge asset for, for the city even moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Kimball?
Hey, Brad. As with any new job, the city council position comes with a learning curve. As you may be aware, numerous changes have occurred within our municipality, to include new management over the course of the past year or so. Given this information, please give one example of how, in your work experience, you've encountered a similar situation in which you had to learn a job, a skill, or both, in a very short amount of time, in order to be as efficient, efficient and as effective as possible in that new role?
Mayor Price, councilmembers, I, I, that's an interesting question for me, I, I feel, I might not answer it directly, but I'll give it my best. As you all know, the last eight years with the city of Maricopa, we've been through several city managers, I've been through a couple direct bosses myself as director, and each, each manager had a different philosophy, each city manager, and, and some drastically different. And so I, I felt like I was, I was successful in being able to continue to climb the ladder with the city of Maricopa through all those different managers and management philosophies. So I understand what it means to be a team player, and, and to take on whatever role is needed, to fill those gaps, wherever the weaknesses are, and I, I consider myself a sponge, you know, I, I, I wanted to learn everything that it had to do, has to do with development services when I first started, and that's, you know, how I felt like I was able to continue to climb the ladder while I was here, so I, I can definitely adapt to change, and I think it's, I think it's a good thing.
Okay, well, that completes the questions at this time, so thank you very much, we appreciate it, and we'll have you go back to the room and send in Mr. Carl Dietrich, please.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I had, I'm sorry, Brad, will you send in Dan? I, I'm sorry, I had that miswritten. I apologize.
Dan Frank, number two?
Yeah, you're, you're right, and that's, that's my fault, I apologize.
Question.
Yeah, Dan Frank is number two. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Uh, good question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Brad, here?
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, I apologize, yeah. You can only be so organized. See what you try, you try and try. Hi, Dan, how are you?
Good evening.
You may want to move that microphone up a little bit there, thank you very much. Dan, we're going to ask you a few questions here, we're going to start actually at this end this time, so Councilmember Kimball, will you start, please?
Hey, Dan. As with any new job, the city council position comes with a learning curve. As you may be aware, numerous changes have occurred within our municipality, to include new management over the course of the past year or so. Given this information, please give one example of how, in your work experience, you've encountered a similar situation in which you've had to learn a job, a skill, or both, in a very short amount of time, in order to be as efficient and effective as possible in that new role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. One of the examples of that was at my previous employer, Dibble Engineering, where I was a civil engineer with them for about sixteen years. Our practice leader there at the time is in the Drainage and Flood Control Group, he left somewhat unexpected, unexpectedly, and since I was a senior person in that group, I kind of volunteered to, to fill those shoes, at least temporarily, until we, we figured out what we wanted to do with the practice. In that situation, I, I was somewhat familiar with the roles and responsibilities of, of being the practice leader, but not a hundred percent, so I had to jump in and kind of had to drink from a fire hose, so to speak, and, and learn things all at once, but it went on to be a great experience.
Great, thank you. Councilman Gussie?
Thank you. I, I value higher education. What is the highest level of education you've completed, and how will your degree, your education, make you an asset to this council?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in engineering from Arizona State University, but I also consider myself a lifetime learner. I love learning new things and having new experiences. I believe that having the degree and background in civil engineering, the root word of civil is, is civilization, so they, they teach us, going through that, of everything that's required to have a successful city. So I have a broad, a great breadth of knowledge, and different aspects of that, from transportation, site design, drainage and flood control, like I mentioned, real deep understanding of, of those systems.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Mr. Frank, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Why do you feel serving a six-month term of office is more compelling than serving a full si, four-year term?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
Why do you feel that a serving a six-month term is more compelling than serving a full, four-year term?
Yes, sir, councilmember, I don't believe it's more compelling or less compelling, it was simply, I saw an opportunity and a need, so that's, I have entertained the thought in the past of, of running for council, but just with busy lifestyle and starting up some new business ventures, I just, I have pulled the trigger on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. My question is, is the city code claims the role of a council member is to be a part-time job, but most highly effective councilmembers will tell you that it's much more of a full-time job. So please acquaint us with your current schedule and how you'll make the necessary sacrifices to be present, day or night, at all the required council meetings, committee meetings, committee, council subcommittee meetings, special meetings, engagements with, engagements with your constituents, et cetera, in order to effectively move this city forward, especially considering the amount of work that's still left to be done here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Well, my offices are located out here in the city, I work, we, we have our own business here that we operate out of our house, and we have employees that, that help us out from time to time as well. So I do have a flexible schedule, since I'm the boss, I am able to break away there and go take care of business as needed.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
Can you tell us what kind of public servant positions you've held in the city of Maricopa or anywhere else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Councilman, well, I started out here in 2005 with the, what was then the Public Works Committee under Bob Jackson, and that later morphed into the Transportation Advisory Committee, where I served until about 2011, and I was actually the chairman of that committee for, I believe it was the last two or three years. In addition to that, I have served with the Central Arizona Mountain Rescue Association and MCSO's Mountain Rescue Posse as a volunteer since about 2001. I've served on the board of that association, both as secretary and as president, several terms as secretary, and I'm still affiliated with that group, but I'm no longer on the board.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Chapados?
Good evening, Dan.
Good evening.
City council has adopted a code of ethics, including the expectation to sign an acknowledgement statement upon being sworn into office. As a member of council, what do you feel is your personal responsibility in upholding that ethics code, and what will you do to set a good example for the rest of council?
Yes, councilmember, well, I've always believed that those in office should be held to a high standard, and it's one of kind of my guiding principles that, to do things the best that you can do, and, and adhere to those ethics. I would not have any problem signing an ethics agreement. I consider myself a highly ethical person. I'm sorry, did that answer your question? You know, it's one of the, it's been said that in order for evil to triumph, you know, good men to do nothing, and I certainly don't want it to be said of me that I did nothing. So here I find myself with an opportunity to get in and serve the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan, that completes the initial questioning, we appreciate it, if you'll stay here, we'll have council, our city staff bring the next person. Thank you very much. Thank you. You gonna start over there? Thank you, Carl, appreciate it. We are going to go through the questions, and we'll start over here, you have up to three minutes to answer them, and so we'll start with Councilwoman Chapados, someone to go all the way across.
Good evening, Carl.
Hi.
City council has adopted a code of ethics, including the expectation to sign an acknowledgement statement upon being sworn into office. As a member of council, what do you feel is your personal responsibility in upholding that code, and what will you do to set an example for the rest of council?
I think anything that would cause the city to be put into a bad light by the behavior or actions of a council member would fall under that purview, and I would have no problem signing it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Hi there, Carl.
Hi.
Can you give us your past experience on public servant positions that you've served in the city of Maricopa or anywhere else?
Sure. I did not serve in any capacity before I moved to the city of Maricopa. Most of where I lived before was larger communities, cities, and, and it wasn't something that had really gotten my attention. When I moved to Maricopa in 2005, I attended my first council meeting and met Mayor Kelly Anderson, and he asked me to participate as the chairman of the Prop 400 Public Safety Initiative. From there, I met several public safety members and chose to run for the Maricopa Fire Board, and I served on the fire board from 2006 to 2007, when the fire department became a fully encompassed entity of the city. From there, I ran for city council in 2008, and was
My question is, is the city code claims that the role of a council member is a part-time job, but I think you'd agree that most effective council members will tell you that it's much more of a full-time job. Can you please acquaint us with your current schedule and how you'll make the necessary sacrifices to be present, day or night, at all the required council meetings, subcommittee meetings? You know all the meetings that happen?
Sure.
And, you know, engagements with your constituents, et cetera? Because we have a lot of work that's left to be done here in the city, and so we're going to need someone that's always available.
Sure, I understand. Obviously, serving for four years, I am aware of the commitment level that's necessary. I currently am the general manager of Family Entertainment Center. As the general manager, I establish my own schedule. And I work constantly with juggling that schedule to serve the needs of both my family, my work environment. I have a 10-year-old son, and as we all know, the kids take up time. But one of the things that I always made sure of when I was a council member was that I was present and active in every decision that needed to be made.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Councilman Brown.
Carl, why do you feel serving a six-month term of office is more compelling than serving a full four-year term?
It's a good question. I think the psychological, physical, and emotional toll of a campaign season is not something that I was desiring to go through. I served my four years. I made an effort to continue that service. I believe that I have certain skills and experience as a council member that will limit the learning curve. And I felt I owed it to myself to put in an application, knowing that I could try to continue to serve without having that desire to actually run an entire campaign.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Gussi.
Hello, Carl. I think this is the first time I've ever seen you in this new city hall.
I'm sorry?
I think this is the first time I've ever seen you in the new city hall here. I value higher education. What is the highest level of education you've completed? And how will your degree make you an asset on this council?
I don't have a degree. I have attended college at both Iowa State University and the University of Phoenix.
How would your education assist you in, you attended college?
You know, I grew up with parents who valued the, not only education, but the education of the family. And we were forced to read with my siblings. We did a lot of stuff together. We worked together. We had to, with three siblings, we had to learn to communicate and play fairly with each other. So I would say the education of my family life, moving and living in different areas, as well as the education that I had serving for four years, I think that was an extremely good education that I could apply to this position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kimble.
Hi, Carl. As with any new job, the city council position comes with a learning curve. As you may be aware, numerous changes have occurred within our municipality to include new management over the course of the past year or so. Given this information, please give one example of how, in your work experience, you've encountered a similar situation in which you had to learn a job, a skill, or both, in a very short amount of time, in order to be as efficient and effective as possible in that role?
I began my current career with Brunswick in August of 2012. And I was placed into a low-level center. I was really given no guidance, the way the company, their training program, let's say, leaves something to be desired. And they're working on that. In a short amount of time, in fact, it was just over a year, I was actually able to change the operations at that center. And I was promoted to the center in Mesa, which is about three times the volume. I've had five different bosses in that time with Brunswick. And I've had to learn to understand each person and fit my style of management with my supervisors, so that I can continue to learn and understand the bowling business, which I didn't have any experience prior to taking the job with the company.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And have a seat, and we'll call in the last candidate, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much. Good evening, Rosalyn. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor.
Appreciate it. We ended up over here, so we're going to start over here. You have up to three minutes to answer each question. And we'll start with Councilmember Kimble.
Hi, Rosalyn.
Hello.
As with any new job, the city council position comes with a learning curve. As you may be aware, numerous changes have occurred within our municipality to include new management over the course of the past year or so. Given this information, please give one example of how, in your work experience, you've encountered a similar situation in which you had to learn a job, a skill, or both, in a very short amount of time, in order to be as efficient and effective as possible in that role?
When I worked at Ballard Spa, which is also on my resume, I was kind of thrown into the whole redistricting situation. Other than attending council meetings here in the city, I never really got to see what happens behind closed doors and all the work that happens in going into something like redistricting, planning the maps, taking into consideration different cities, their needs, everyone's complaints. And while I wasn't part, while I was part of the legal crew that helped advise on that, as in I was the assistant that helped gather a lot of that information, things were always changing, whether it was decisions on where the lines were going to be drawn, and I had to quickly react and get new information, voter information, information that affected the citizens, so that those people could make better decisions. I was constantly being asked to change the direction of which they were going, based on whatever city they were going to draw those lines. So a lot of what I had to do in the private sector has always revolved into adapting to the situation right then and there. In the military, it was just an everyday situation, so.
Thank you. Councilman Gussi.
Well, thank you for your service the week of Memorial Day here. I value higher education. What is your highest level of education completed? And how will your degree or education make you an asset to this council? I have an associate's degree, and I've attended some leadership classes. But to be honest, I think my life experience has been more of my educational degree than my degree. Being able to be involved with the community, whether it's inside or outside, the type of work that I do, since I've been in Arizona, and every law firm that I have been at, has managed to somehow, some way, put the city of Maricopa in front of me. Whether it was the different communities that were under construction, the problems residents having with their homes, soil problems, just a variety of things, transportation issues. So I think my life experiences, I think, contribute more than I would say my behind-the-books degree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brown.
Rosalyn, why do you feel serving a six-month term is more compelling than serving a four-year term?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Someone else actually asked me that same question as to why I wasn't running again for city council. And my answer to that is, I don't believe there's more importance in a four-year than a six-month. I think every meeting that's attended, every decision that's made affects the city residents. I don't think, I think when you are on a board or a committee or on council for four years, you contribute longer, but I don't think your importance is any less just because you sit for six months.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My question is, is the city code claims that the role of a council member is a part-time job, but most highly effective council members will tell you that it's much more of a full-time job. So can you please acquaint us with your current schedule and how you're going to make the necessary sacrifices to be present, day or night, at all the required council meetings, committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, special meetings, engagements with your constituents, et cetera? And in order to effectively move the city forward, because there's certainly a ton of work that still needs to be done.
Mayor, one of my letter of recommendation came from my boss, and I did that intentionally. Before I applied, I made sure that I had the support and the approval and the blessing of those around me, whether it was my family, my employer, my schedule, since I've changed my hours at work pretty much to accommodate my family, my job, I've been blessed with that type of job. So I'm proud to say I have the full backing and support of my employers and my family to attend and serve my community.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Farrell.
Rosalyn, can you tell us what past experience you have as far as serving, serving the public as a public servant here in Maricopa or anywhere else?
I think when you joined the military, for me, anyway, even when you are no longer serving as a soldier, you feel you always serve. I think everyone who has served believes that. I live in Maricopa because of the people in Maricopa. I can't say it's always been a good experience. Six months into moving here, I was blessed with twins. And I had to go to the Phoenix Children's Hospital. And I learned that serving Maricopa didn't mean being in Maricopa. I had to stay at the Ronna McDonald House because my daughter was ill. And subsequently, I started volunteering and cooking dinners and finding out that plenty of families here in Maricopa, because there was no hospital here, also were there. So I was serving those people, too. And through our stories, we find out that you don't always have to be in the city of Maricopa to help the people in Maricopa. So I do that, and that's something near and dear to me. I also take to heart something my grandmother has said before she passed, which was, you don't help the people already getting help. You help those who aren't getting help. And by that she meant, she used to give a plate of food to the neighbor down the street. And that's because that woman had too much pride to go to the food bank. That's kind of how I was raised. There are a lot of people in Maricopa that suffer in silence, whether it's a veteran or a senior citizen or a single mom, who, they live in Tortosa, they live in the villages. I've come across all these people in my campaigns during my last several years running for council. And some of them can't make it to these places for help and won't. Their pride won't let them. I have taken them to get food. I have taken them to hospitals, and I have helped in ways that I know they could not help themselves.
Thank you very much. Councilman Chappadus.
Hi, Rosalyn.
Hi.
City Council has adopted a code of ethics, which comes with the expectation of signing an acknowledgement statement when you're sworn into office. As a member of city council, what do you feel is your personal responsibility in upholding the ethics code? Bless you. And what will you do to set an example for your fellow council members?
I was just saying to someone who I respect that you're only as good as the word you keep. When we all ran for office, doesn't matter who we ran against, we all made a promise to our constituents to be more than just representatives of the city. We are them. We are the faces of the people who we represent. And I have to look at my children, who, my daughter who graduated, my son who's an army vet, my kindergartner, my nine-year-old. I have to look at them and tell them mommy kept her promise to the same people, just as they would expect me to keep my promise to them. I can't expect my own children to hold these values high if I don't. So I expect to, if honored and selected, to hold this position, whether it's one month or six months, with the utmost integrity.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. We appreciate it. At this point, the process goes is that council now has before them a slip of paper. They need to go forward and make some decisions. If you wish to have discussion council, you may. But if not, we can move to the vote. Please place your selected items up here, so the city clerk can retrieve those. And again, you can vote up to two, two different people if you so desire at this time. And with that, we'll have them move up here to the front, as the council might have additional questions to go through.
And I have to look at my children, who, my daughter who graduated, my son who's an Army vet, my kindergartner, my nine-year-old, I have to look at them and tell them mommy kept her promise to the same people, just as they would expect me to keep my promise to them. I can't expect my own children to hold these values high if I don't. So I expect to, if honored and selected, to hold this position, whether it's one month or six months, with the utmost integrity.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Appreciate it. At this point, the process goes is that council now has before them a slip of paper, they need to go forward and make some decisions. If you wish to have discussion council, you may, but if not, we can move to the vote. Please place your selected items up here so the city clerk can retrieve those. And again, you can vote up to two, two different people if you so desire at this time. The top three candidates will advance, and with that, we'll have them move up here to the front, as the council might have additional questions to go through. As you can see, the votes are in, and it appears as though Dan Frank has four votes, Brand Hitten has four votes, Carl has three, and Rosalyn has one. So at this time, the top three candidates will advance, and we ask you to please come forward to the chair here. Thank you, Rosalyn, for participating. Great. Feel free to have a seat. At this time, council, it's your opportunity to have further discussion, ask additional questions of any candidate that you see fit. There is no issue of fairness at this point, it's the ability for any council member to have any questions or concerns resolved. So the floor is yours, council.
Mayor, do these questions have to be asked to all three candidates, or you can pick anyone?
You can pick anyone you want. Any questions?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Chappadus?
I have a question for all of the candidates. Council has approved several citizen-based advisory committees that act as an extension of this body. Please share your opinions on the importance and the roles of these committees.
So if we just start with Dan, we'll go from there.
Yes, well, having served on one of those committees, like I said before, the Transportation Advisory Committee, I think they're of utmost importance in helping to drive direction, and it's very good for the council to set in on those committees and get the input of others, sometimes professionals, sometimes laypeople, and their opinions on how things should be done. You know, sometimes it just is good to bring in a fresh set of eyes, and I think that's what those citizen advisory committees provide.
Thank you.
I served on the Public Safety Committee. It was my first appointed position with the city. It was integral in, I think, having a citizen group that could help give council input and an understanding. Sometimes it's difficult for those sitting on council to try to get all the input. You've got many, many people trying to give you their opinion and what they believe the city should do to move forward, and I think what citizen advisory committees do is they give a voice to the people that can be kind of consolidated. I think at the onset of the city, our founding members and original city council, I think, relied heavily on the focus of those committees to do a lot of the footwork. There was so much to do to start a city and to get everything going, it would be incredible to try to just rely on one body to find all the answers and to get direction when there are so many people that are willing to serve. I think it's a good thing for the city to have people come together and give their opinion. I think everything that we have in the city today is a testament to the work, not only of council, but of the members who have served on those citizen advisory committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? I'm just kidding. I think they're great for the community as a whole, for both city staff as well as the city council. In most cases, it's either a representative that's highly involved, for instance, like libraries or parks and rec community, or to where they're highly involved in those events or what's going on in that respect, or for instance, the transportation committee to where, like Dan, for instance, is in that profession and is highly knowledgeable on those subjects from a technical side, and they really help both council and staff understand what the decision is on the table better, to make a better decision for the community as a whole, as well as helps city staff learn from it and understand the overall situation and what's going on to learn from it moving forward. So I think they're great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other questions, concerns for the applicants? Yes, Councilwoman Gussi?
This is for Mr. Dietrich. I believe, these are my personal views, that you, sir, are unethical. You managed to circumvent policy when it was to your benefit. I believe, sir, that you were immature. If things didn't go your way, you pout, and you couldn't be professional enough to move on. I believe you were a bully. You used intimidation to get your way. And there was another councilwoman who felt the same way. Now, I'm going to quote something here. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." This is why the now passed away Maya Angelou. Now, did you ever consider once how you made the people and your constituents feel when you would berate them in public and speak to our own mayor at the time in the manner that you did? Did you ever once consider how you made them feel?
Honestly, I'm not up here to address personal attacks. I'm merely putting myself forward in service to my community. Obviously, there's a point of difference between myself and the councilwoman, and I respectfully answer in that way.
Thank you. Council, other questions, concerns for the applicants? Yes, Councilwoman Gussi?
This is for Mr. Dietrich. I believe, these are my personal views, that you, sir, are unethical. You managed to circumvent policy when it was to your benefit. I believe, sir, that you were immature. If things didn't go your way, you pout, and you couldn't be professional enough to move on. I believe you were a bully. You used intimidation to get your way. And there was another councilwoman who felt the same way. Now, I'm going to quote something here. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." This is why the now passed away Maya Angelou. Now, did you ever consider once how you made the people and your constituents feel when you would berate them in public and speak to our own mayor at the time in the manner that you did? Did you ever once consider how you made them feel?
Honestly, I'm not up here to address personal attacks. I'm merely putting myself forward in service to my community. Obviously, there's a point of difference between myself and the councilwoman, and I respectfully answer in that way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gussi? Other questions or concerns? Yes, Vice Mayor Farrell?
I got a question for all three of you. Upon being appointed to this seat right here to my right, for the next six months, what are going to be your goals and objectives, if any, as a council member? Why don't we go Brad first this time?
This way I'll remember the question. I think I said it in some of my, you know, answers to the previous questions, in that I'm here to be an asset to you all. I really don't, in the short term, I think that, you know, my knowledge with the city as a whole and the subject matters going on and everything, and your vision, as well as the current staff, that I'll be a key team player to help make the right decision, you know? And at the same time, you know, listen to every side, listen to the community and what's going on out there, and be a voice, and hear both sides, you know, and not be opinionated, and to listen and hear both sides and then use my knowledge to help be an asset to you all to make the right decisions in the short term.
Thank you.
Obviously, six months is not the time to try to start new initiatives. I think the work that Mayor Price and the rest of the council is doing on our transportation issues, the, you know, current news about some economic development things that are happening in the city, are things that I would like to continue to support and work towards finding, at least in the short term, whatever answer has to be done in representing the city to make sure that those initiatives continue to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, the six months is really too short of a timeframe to be able to really push any kind of plan or agenda or anything like that. I'm here to just serve the city the best that I can. I have a heart for the city and to be able to represent and make good, solid, practical decisions, you know, during the time that I'm here.
Dan, I have a question for you. Just a, you know, there's obviously some incredible competition here. Can you talk a little bit further, obviously, the city of Maricopa is, has, one of our major issues is floodplains, and can you talk to me about your, I mean, right here on your application, it says Arizona Flood Plane Management Association. Can you talk a little bit about your experience with floodplain management?
Yeah, well, the bulk of my engineering career has been with drainage and flood control, so that's something that is near and dear to my heart. When I mentioned to some of my colleagues that I was moving down here from Chandler, they, you know, say, "Hey, you know that's all in the historic floodplain, right?" I'm like, "Yeah." But, you know, the engineers that did the work around here, you have to believe that they did a good, solid job with most everything. However, that being said, you know, we live in a watershed that is over 8,000 square miles, you know, and it extends all the way down to into Mexico. So the potential there is huge. And whether or not you're, I don't want to get in a soapbox here on floodplain mapping and such, but you may or may not be in a designated floodplain, but that doesn't mean you're out of harms way. And I just think that, I had been in many public meetings before where we were trying to explain to constituents the hazard that was posed by flooding. And they would say, "Oh, well, I see I'm not in the mapped floodplain, I'm not in a floodplain. Do I still need to buy insurance?" Well, the answer is no, you probably don't need to buy insurance, but should you? Well, maybe. You know, you're just outside the line by a little bit, that doesn't mean you're out of harms way. And floods greater than the 100-year event can and do happen, you know? And like I said, I think we have some responsibility just to make people aware of that.
Thank you very much. I have two other questions, and it's one for each candidate, so thank you very much, Dan. The next question I have is for Carl. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Dan. Carl, obviously, again, some stiff competition here from the standpoint of, I think they're all qualified in a different fashion, and I kind of just wanted to point out some of those from each of these. You know, obviously, picking a council candidate is not black and white, it's not cut and dry, everybody's looking for something different, you know, there's so many factors that go into it. But my question really specifically to you is, you know, considering the fact that you have certainly the most experience on council of any of the applicants, I guess I'd just like to hear your honest answer as to, knowing some of the issues that may be existing here as per the last question that was asked you, do you find, how do you intend to deal with that? How do you intend to deal with moving the city forward and if you're selected, that you'd be able to really help this council be cohesive?
I think one of the, one of the things that I tried to focus on in my first term was always coming with an open mind and always willing to change my mind, as well as always trying to, try to convince others to see things maybe the way that I have. In moving the city forward, we're going to have to ask a lot of questions. We're going to have to be willing to change our own paradigm, our own way of thinking about things, to make sure that we're actually getting to the right answer. You know, it's one thing to just unilaterally agree on something, it's another thing to come to that agreement because we've asked the right questions. And I think that's something that I have focused on and that I constantly tried to do, was ask the right questions and find the answers that ultimately would be the best answer to move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad? Brad, you come to us with a different background. Obviously, you know, you've come through the ranks of the city, you've seen it from the city staff perspective, and, you know, this is an interesting opportunity to see it from the policy perspective. Obviously, you've worked with council members for, you know, eight, 10 years now, and so, and with a father in the industry, I mean, you certainly know the council manager form of government well. But I guess my question to you is, what do you see as the real opportunity in your life here? I know you tried to explain that in one of the earlier questions, but how do you anticipate, do you see that there will be problems from a micromanagement standpoint if you're now a policymaker versus a former staff? Or do you bring with you the objectivity of knowing what it is to be on the staff side, and if you've ever been micromanaged before from a council perspective? I mean, how do you see this as a unique opportunity?
I definitely see it as a long-term opportunity for me, I'm not going to lie. I took on, I left the city because the right opportunity was there for me and my family at this, right at this time. But I enjoy the public sector. I wouldn't have left if it wasn't for money. I mean, come on, I'm not going to lie. And so, surprise? So I want to build, I want to build my experience as a whole, and I see that opportunity to get back to local government one day. So that's one side, I think, of the question. And then, the micromanage part, I mean, I've said it over and over, not to beat a dead horse, but I really feel like I can be an asset, to see both sides and give that perspective, you know, of maybe some insight on what has been going on at the staff level. And, I mean, I don't take this the wrong way, but I've seen through my childhood what my dad has gone through, and the difference of opinions, and what you have to do to juggle, to juggle that. And so, you know, out of respect for Mr. Rose and understanding his side of things, I really think I can be an asset to give both sides. I mean, I don't have an agenda, you know, no bad blood whatsoever, like I said. I was not looking for a job. The job came to me, and I enjoyed every bit of it here. And so I really see it as an opportunity for myself to see if I'm interested in this side, that side of the table, as well as to be an asset in such a short timeframe because of my, you know, immediate knowledge of what's going on here.
Thank you. I want to ask a follow-up question of you, Dan. Obviously, your current employer is one in which is a builder that does business in the city. Do you see that as a conflict, or how would you, I mean, it's not like something comes up with that builder every day, but how would you, how would you deal with those issues? How is your employer going to deal with those issues?
We really, what we're doing, what Meritage Homes, there's, we're in two subdivisions. One of them being Rancho El Dorado, which, the lakes at Rancho El Dorado, and that one is not land development, it's just vertical construction. We're building homes in finished lots as they sell. And then the other subdivision, which land development is currently going on, is Province. Province is out of our Tucson office, and I'm in the Phoenix Division. So it's not the same division as me, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to sit here and lie, that I don't get questioned and I don't get brought into subject matters, but there's not a lot going on, and I respect both sides and understand, you know, to step aside and not be involved if it even, if anything even comes up in this six months. So I just don't see it as a conflict.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor Farrell, do you have a question?
I do. Brad?
You're in the hot seat. Sorry, Brad.
Stay in the hot seat there, man.
Is that a trick question? Do I see myself working better with staff or the city manager? Well, the city manager is staff. I don't plan on, you know, I, my interaction, I understand it, and my interaction will be with, you know, with the city manager. I mean, I, I have friendships at the staff level. A lot of my closer friendships have, have left, but, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I understand the question fully, but, I mean, obviously, my interaction's going to be with, with Mr. Rose.
You answered it.
Councilman Gussi.
I just wanted to follow up on your question, and this is a question for all of you. Now, there's still work to be done in the next six months, and my question to you all is, knowing who is up here, you know more, I know, you know more about us, a few of you, than we know about you. So, my question to you is, how do you plan on being a team player and getting the work that we need to get done in the next six months on this council?
Yeah, as a member of the rescue team, we have to be team players, and, you know, there's just no other way about it. Our lives depend on that, working together component. When, when I was at Dibble, also, it was a very tight environment, working with my little group, and we, we accomplished a lot of great things, helping each other out whenever we could. No job was too big or too small, you know, that anybody could just jump in and take on a part of it and not step on anybody else's toes. We all, we all had such a great relationship. So, it would be, one of my goals is to be able to build a relationship with each one of you to, as we move forward with city business.
I don't think we could have accomplished what we did by setting in motion the decisions that have led to the development of Maricopa if all of us didn't find, while I was on council, a way to work together, even in the face of personal or philosophical differences. The one thing that every single body that has sat in those chairs has done is come together and made the right decisions for Maricopa. I believe that while I was on council, I held council members that I disagreed with responsible for their decisions, and I believe I was held responsible for mine. I believe ultimately that that led to better decisions being made. I think we have to work as a team, there is no doubt about that. There are those opportunities where you were left one-on-one, and you have to talk through those, committee assignments, lots of things where philosophical differences may guide you in a different way, but ultimately, that final decision has to come because it's, it's the best decision for the city. And I truly believe that I have not only proven, but done everything in my power while I sat up there to find that common ground, to find that teamwork so that we could move forward. Thank you.
I think I beat this one up a little bit, but I think to be a team player for both yourselves, the council, as well as as the community, to make the right decision is important, to listen to both sides. There, there's two particular items, you know, one of them, Mayor Price touched on with Dan, which was the floodplain. And then, the second one is utilities. And both my experience with the city of Maricopa in dealing with both of those subjects, you know, my liaison, I was the utility coordinator on the development services side with, with all of the utility companies, so my extensive knowledge with Global Water, with the city of Maricopa, and then my experience I'm getting now with dealing with other private utility companies, and then also, I'm dealing with a couple subdivisions myself that are in a floodplain, and then, you know, knowing exactly what floodplain issues we have here, I think that those will, those are huge assets that I'll bring to the table and help as a team, you know, make, make right choices, make decisions for the community.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions? Anything else, any discussion you wish to have? Okay, well, then that leads us to round two. If you'd all take out your cards, and please place your vote for one individual. Thank you very much, candidates. So, the top two that advance are Mr. Carl Dietrich and Dan Frank. Frank with four votes and Carl with two. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Brad. We appreciate your participation. Okay, this time, if there's any additional questions, concerns of the final two candidates, now would be the time to ask. Councilman Chapados.
For both candidates, Maricopa is fastly approaching a population that's going to exceed 50,000. As a council member, what would be the top three things you would like to see city council focus on as we reach that milestone?
Well, there's quite a few challenges facing the city. I believe getting some better retail sources out here would be great, so as along the economic development lines, I think we really need to enhance that. Personally, it's like, I'd love to get a Home Depot out here, just for all the projects I do. One of the other key issues, and it's, it's not really a short-time fix, but it's one that we desperately need, and everybody knows it, and that's the grade separation. So, we really have to do everything we can do to move that forward. That probably won't happen in my term, definitely, and maybe not most of y'all's terms, but it's something we need to keep an eye on and, and try to get that going. As, I think also, there's, there's a host of other just minor transportation-related issues facing the city, and, because it does sometimes take an inordinate amount of time just to, just to get through town. It's like, man, oh, man, sometimes it seems like I have to wait for four cycles for the light to turn into fries. And it just gets to be frustrating. So, I think we do have a few, like I said, just minor transportation issues to clean up. Honeycutt Road would be another one, and working around that and the, the whole grade separation conglomerate of stuff that's going on right there. So, that's what I got.
Thank you.
I think, you know, the grade separation has been something that every council has been concerned with, with the safety impact that it has. You know, we have seen accidents at that intersection with the tracks, and I don't need to belabor the point that that's something that we, we have to continue to focus on. Economic growth and bringing jobs to drive towards a sustainable economy in Maricopa, I think is, is a, not only a long-term project, but I believe it is short-term as well. I believe that we can't keep our eye off that ball if we want to consider how the future of Maricopa is going to look. You know, so many people leave the city, and I know that that's always been a, an issue from a transportation, to a tax dollars, to you name it. I mean, there's comfort level, there's, there's many issues. And finally, I think having a smart growth plan, you know, we're undergoing the new zoning code revision, bringing that into the city, taking it away from using Pinal County's code, I think that's going to be critical as we move forward. We have to make decisions that, there's a domino effect, and if you allow growth to go unfettered, you're facing public safety issues, you're facing job issues, you're facing development issues. And if you don't, if you don't take a look at how we're moving forward and make sure that we're growing smart, you could be overwhelmed and you could lose control over what the city is looking like and how it is being controlled, and you don't want to lose that opportunity to make the city look the way that we want it to look as residents and as a government. I want to add, although we don't have control as a, as a government, we do have a responsibility to education in our city. And it extends, the interesting thing about our education is, it extends beyond our borders. The Ochchen Indian community is involved in that. The areas south of us, Thunderbird Farms, Hidden Valley, all of those communities are impacted by education. We must partner in some way, meaningful way, with our education facilities and continue to make those options better for our residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions or concerns, counsel? You wish to ask of the candidates at this time? Okay. Obviously, we're down to the final two, so the rules and regs say we'll move to the next vote. If any one individual gets four votes, that would make it official. So, please vote your conscience at one vote. Thank you very much for all the candidates who participated today. I'd like to introduce your new temporary council member for the next five or six months as Mr. Dan Frank. Dan, if you'd please step forward, we'll have the city clerk come forward and swear
If you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Dan Frank.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member of the city of Maricopa.
Discharge the duties of council member of the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
As I understand it, Paul wanted to do a picture. Where did he go?
Mayor, I believe we're trying to get a group picture together.
Okay. Well, he's getting the right lens. Again, let me say this, that, you know, thank you very much to all of the participants. I mean, this is a, it's a hard thing to stick your neck out, it's a hard thing to endure questioning, it's a hard thing to feel like you're the best candidate and not be selected. And so, with that, I thank each and every one of the candidates, they did a phenomenal job. It's tough competition, and I think it offers the opportunity for each of us to grow and to learn, but at the same time, to allow for somebody to try something new. And we certainly have that with Mr. Frank. So, we're thankful for that opportunity, and we thank you all for being here, but we'll, you're free to stay, free to go, we will adjourn this meeting, but we want to get a picture. So, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.